All right, welcome everyone. To the June 11th, 2024 Tom Water City Council Work Session. We have everyone here, I believe, Councilmember Jefferson was coming back in with connection issues. Michael is excused this evening, so other than that, we have everyone here. So Councilmember Swarthow is here, her camera's just not on at the moment. And Councilmember Jefferson will be right back. So with that, we will go ahead and there's Councilmember Jefferson. So with that, we will start with our agenda item, which is the 2025 to 2029 Police Strategic Growth Plan, and I will turn it over to Chief Witz to start us off.
Thanks, Mayor Solon. Let me get the presentation started here. Let me try this again.
You actually see it, so.
Yeah, I didn't bring up the right one. I hit the wrong button. And now it's not bringing up in the mode that I want it in. One more time. Sorry about this.
Oh, it's all right. Technology.
I cannot see my notes, which is not a good thing. Let me try one more thing. All right, here we go. All right, hopefully you can see it now.
Yes, we can.
All right, here we go. So, uh, thank you, Mayor Solon, council members. It's my pleasure to roll out the first strategic growth plan we've had in a number of years to the council. This is culmination of over four years of work that we've engaged in, in a process that includes research, analysis, probably most importantly, community involvement and staff input. During this time period, the staff, or I'm sorry, the full council has been involved at various times. At other times, it's just been members of the Public Safety and Health Committee. And then other times, it was specifically with the mayor and city administrator. As such, there's various levels of involvement and understanding, and this is a very complex document. So with that in mind and understanding the limited time we have tonight, I'm going to provide the council a 30,000-foot overview. Because what I really want to do is reserve sufficient time to dig deeper into the things that the council is interested in doing. Like I said, this is a, this is a complex document. So what I'm going to ask is that you hold your questions to the end. Because if we don't, we're going to unravel this really quickly. And this is four years of work, and the next thing you know, we're going to be three hours down the path and not maybe answered most of the questions. So I'm going to make this really quick. And hopefully you all, I provided the electronic version, but I also printed binders for all of you, so you'd be able to review it ahead of time. I do want to introduce Commander Jay Mason, our Police Administrative Manager Laura Wolf, and Dr. Oliver Bowers. Jay and I really provided the guidance on this. But the meat of, the meat and potatoes of this document really was done between Dr. Bowers and Administrative Manager Wall, and they really deserve a ton of credit for this. So with that being said, I'm going to move on and start the presentation. You know, this quote in front of you really resonates with me, and we wanted to start it off in that. It really talks about where we are or what we think about when we talk about staffing and police staffing. You know, it says, "Our staffing decision to add three more officers is based on the fact we had three extra vehicles." Well, that's a little bit extreme. There's truth in that. And I see Councilmember Dahl of giggling because we had this similar conversation back in, in 2023. As we started coming out of staffing issues and COVID and some of those things in '22, we started looking at our staffing more seriously. And one of the questions I had, and I had asked myself personally, is, you know, at the time, we had 33 officers. Why? And I couldn't answer it. I didn't have a valid answer, and I thought it was kind of ironic that Councilmember Dahl, shortly thereafter in a meeting, couldn't have been more than two weeks later, almost asked me the exact same question. And this really started the process for us, and as we started into the strategic growth plan, is why? And to avoid, because I really want to give you more information, I'm going to stick to my notes, because we'll answer this question. But I wanted to start to, start the presentation off with that, to give you something to think about as we go through this, because it's really at the heart of what we're talking about. So what is the purpose of the strategic growth plan? We really, in order to answer this question, we need to understand these three areas. What is growth? What is our community expectations? And how will that increase our credibility? So the first one is growth. We'll talk about this really quick. The numbers you see in front of you were all obtained from the Thurston Regional Planning Council 2023 profile. But it really talks, this goes back to the quote we were just talking about. So in 2016, most of you know, we did a pretty large annexation in Tomwater, and we added about 3,500 population to the city of Tomwater. At that time, we got five officers for that increased population. Well, you can see by the numbers in front of you, in the last eight years, we've increased another 5,000 people, and we've gotten one officer. And that really, you know, as I started to think about, well, why? And it goes back to really don't have a model, you know, in my 36 years here, I'm not sure why, how we decided it, other than some pretty old staffing models that we can talk about later, if you're interested. And then we have to think about what's growth look like in 2030, you know, six years from now. We're going to add another 5,000 on top of that. So how do we manage that growth? Well, the plan is going to address that. Then we talk about the process, and when we talk about the process of developing the plan, we really have to understand our, and our community expectations. So I just really want to kind of go over really quick the timeline that we've done in the last four years, you know, in 2020, 2021, the council was heavily involved in the police reform discussion, which led to, number one, there, you see the policing in Tomwater report. You know, we had a lot, the laws required changes in tactics. You really saw an increase in the number of officers and times on calls. And in this morning's Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, we talked about, you know, the difference in our increase in calls for service, which is actually contributing to our decrease in proactive activity. Excuse me. So that's one of the things that came out of in 2021. We were, we completed that report in '21 with the councils involved, full councils involvement. And in your package, you'll see that as Appendix A. And then in 2022, the city wanted to go a little deeper, and so they conducted the citywide survey. They hired a consultant, and we, we got pretty much positive feedback from the community regarding the survey. Fortunately for me at this point is when I hired Dr. Oliver Bowers to help us with management analysts, analysis. And one of the things Dr. Bowers did when he first joined us is he actually, his background is in research and, and dealing with the things that the survey did. And he looked it over, and he validated that survey as well. So you will see that in your packet as Appendix B. Then we move on to 2023, and this is really where we started the Police Strategic Growth Plan and initiating it. One of the first things we had to do, we had to answer that question, why do we have 33 officers? So I went to Dr. Bowers before any of this really started to take form. And I challenged him, I challenged him to tell me, why? Should we have 24? Should we have 44? How many officers should we have? And to develop a staffing model that is applicable to Tomwater, because, you know, most of the national models that are out there are, are for cities much, much larger, larger, Seattle, New York, Tacoma, you know, really bigger cities. And so we were lucky enough that Dr. Bowers was able to develop a mod, a staffing model for us. It's based on quantitative and qualitative data. And we presented that to the Public Health and Safety Committee in January 2023, because that really is the stepping point for the Police Strategic Growth Plan. We have to have a model that we can use to build this plan. And, and the committee approved for us to move forward with it. And you will see that in Appendix D. Also included in Appendix D, you will see that we provided you a different view than what you're going to see right now in this presentation. We broke down every year of the proposed organizational charts, '25 through '29, so you could see it in a different view of the additions and what that might look like. And then we also wanted to provide you the Tomwater Police Department Staff Longevity Chart. To give you an idea, you know, Public Health and Safety has heard us talk about this off and on for the last couple of years. But we have a big gap. We have the, you know, people over 20 years, about eight or nine people in 20 years, and then it drops off again. And so we're going to have a lot of attrition. So, you know, as we're doing the Police Strategic Growth Plan, how do we plan for succession planning? And continuing the department, continuing the successful path that's on. So also in 2023, we moved on from that, and this is really where we got into number three on the chart there, and that's the focus groups. This is where we went out to our community and asked them what they want. What do they want to see? What services do you like and do you not like? And if you want to, Dr. Bowers can talk in depth about the research model he used to do that. And it really, what we got out of that process was a lot of qualitative data that complemented the quantitative data we got from the survey. And this was not solicited information. This was information they volunteered. So, and after that was all done, and that took a couple of months, then Dr. Bowers used a research-based method and published social science study methods to group that community feedback into three themes. And those three themes are how we built this report, and you can see that in Appendix C. Oops, I went too far. So where are we at right now? We're, we're at process number five on that chart, and that's the development of the plan. So what you're going to see now is, I'm going to show you a little bit different view than what was in your packet. And I think a little easier to digest how much of the plan and put it all into, in slide by slide, year by year. There's four areas that the plan addresses. It addresses services over the next five years, it addresses staffing, it addresses our facility needs, and addresses technology. Each year in your packet, you see, you will see all of those outlined. So when we continue into year one, that's pages five through seven in your packet. For certain new services, the first one is implement the retail corridor patrol. That's actually something we've already started to do, but we want to build on that further. We're going to implement a regional proactive investigations team, and that's something we're partnering up with our partners at Olympia and Lacy, and want to start doing in 2025. Excuse me. We want to establish a volunteer program. This is something that we've been trying to do for a number of years. We just don't have the resources, and as you can, you'll see here below, we don't have the facilities. And I'll talk about that in a second. And then the last one is increase our social media presence. I mean, that is something we've been working on since the policing in Tomwater report, and again, it's resource-heavy. And we've started into that. We've hired some, some pretty good people in our department now that have expertise to help us in that venue. So when you look at facilities, right now, the Tomwater Police Department is completely full. We have developed it as far as it can, and we have no room to grow any further. And that's not just in the police department. The city council's heard about it from all the departments in the city. And so what we've done is we've come up with an option to lease space in the next, for over the next two to five years that will allow the bigger conversation of what we do with City Hall. You know, do we expand City Hall? Do we build a new police department? You know, go through all the different iterations that the council's going to need to decide when we look at facilities, because it is bigger than just the police department. But this will provide us the ability to grow. Without a facility, none of the strategic growth plan can happen, because we just flat don't have the space. And so in the new lease office space, we would move our investigations unit and our training unit over there to provide space for a volunteer program and expanding our patrol division. So when you look at this and you see in your report, it talks about staffing additions. I think the one thing, when it says one sergeant, one detective, two patrol officers, those are actually all four patrol officers. We don't hire sergeants, we don't hire detectives. What we do is we promote those from within. So when you see one sergeant, we need to add a sergeant position, but what we will actually do is promote somebody into sergeant and hire a new officer behind them. So in the, in the cost, when we did our projected cost, we accounted for both of those. The police service specialist, and then you'll see in there the one network specialist. The network specialist, the police services specialist, and the sergeant are all tied into the body worn camera process. Those are the bodies we need to run a successful program. And that's why you see down in technology, in 2025, we'll start to prepare for the body worn camera program by starting hiring. We're going to have to run hiring processes and such, and try to get those in place. During that time, as you're well aware, we are well into, we're finalizing a contract now for our new records management system. And this is one of the things that's tying up our ability for body worn cameras. Because in 2025, our front office staff, our administrative staff is going to be completely tied up, probably most of the year, building the new records management system with the vendor. And so we just, again, it's down to resource management. And that, that project is, we've been working on for about three or four years, bringing that new system on, onboard. And then we also have to implement the Flock camera system. So we move on to year two. Year two, and you can see as, as I'm talking about this, the first two years of the plan are really heavy upfront. Because we're preparing for everything, you will see that all the staffing and everything really happens in the first couple of years. On the new services, you'll see we'll finalize the body worn camera policies. I will start getting involved with community input, negotiating with the guild, not only over policies, but over pay for the body worn cameras, and that all takes time. It also will, you know, if we get the three positions approved for the body worn camera system, all of those are directly involved in the planning, especially the IT network specialist. We need all those people to build it from the ground up. We'll establish a record specialist for body worn cameras. We'll implement a business liaison officer program. That was one of the things that really the community spoke heavily on. We'll add an SRO program or SRO officer to the elementary schools. We'll expand the scope of our volunteer program. And then in 2026, year two, we'll partner with the Lacy Police Department, who should have the new training facility open, and we hope to host a basic law enforcement academy in Thurston County to help all the police agencies more timely get people on the road. There is no new additional space needs for facilities. Our staffing addition, our two patrol officers, the business liaison officer, the school resource officer, and then also the record supervisor, and this really gets into span of control, because our administrative staff has grown. And last, in year two, is technology. We'll go live with our new regional records management system, and then we'll also procure the body worn cameras. Year three is new services. We'll add youth academy, and we'll refine our volunteer services. Again, no new facilities. Staffing is three positions, two sergeants and one patrol officer. The two sergeants is directly related to supervision, maintaining 24/7 supervision in patrol. As our patrol teams continue to grow, we will have to address supervision. And then in the beginning of year three, possibly the end of year two, but beginning of year three, we will go live with body worn cameras. Year four, we want to, the new services is we really want to take our volunteer program, excuse me, and connect them with other regional volunteer groups, expand beyond the city, and, and more of a regional approach. Again, facilities, most likely, we will have a direction within this time of where the city's going, and we can pivot at any time and address that. Staffing is two more patrol officers, one more police service specialist, that's an admin position, and no new technology tools identified. And the last year is expand our SRO services. That is something we'll look at doing. The schools are very interested in expanding that. Right now, we have two people servicing two high schools, two middle schools, and six elementary schools. And then no new facilities, staffing addition is two patrol officers and one SRO, and no new technology. And the last slide. So what does this cost? Right now, the projected cost for all of this is between 6.9 million and 7.4 million over the five years. And that really gets into, that's facilities, technology, staffing, and all of that. So with that, like I said, I wanted to do a 30,000-foot overview, and now I really want to open it up to your questions, and I will stop the presentation.
Any questions? Councilmember Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Great presentation. I like the graphics. I like that summary. So I like the direction that's going. I have a handful of questions, but I want to start with the focus groups. Could we get a little more detail of who comprised that focus group, right? We have the community survey, and we saw the demographics was a specific demographic of our community, right? So how, can you tell us more about the focus groups? Who was reached out to and what that consisted of?
Absolutely. Dr. Bowers?
So for the focus groups, we reached out to the entire community. We pushed it out through the city, through social media, you know, we, we did everything we could to, you know, push this out to anyone who wanted to participate. I built effectively a form where people could basically just give us a little bit of information about who they are and, you know, why they wanted to take part in this. And then we built three different groups that had a full, effectively range of ages, demographics, you know, every different component we could to make what I would consider to be the most mixed-bad group of participants in each group. There was, I mean, just on, you know, participant engagement alone, there were people from, you know, every side of the policing debate, every side of the socioeconomic group component, educational attainment. It was a huge mix, if that answers that question.
That's beginning. Where could we see that breakdown?
The breakdown of.
The demographics of whether age, ability, contact with the criminal justice system, all those. What, what qualifiers? Where could we see that breakdown? And then along with that is doing emails and different platforms out, what specific groups were reached out to? Was like nonprofits, Cielo, looking at different demographics, those who don't have English speaking as their first language, other groups like the Osho Cultural Community Center. What targeted engagement occurred?
Well, one of the issues with using a research method is when you target specific groups, you skew your results. So the key is to try and make your engagement component as broad and bland as possible, but make it as encouraging to everyone as possible. So we used our community rep to reach out through her channels, and we reached out through all channels that we could, because when you reach out to a very specific group, you have to make sure that you reach out to every single specific group, but also the people who aren't associated with those groups, which then gets into kind of the haves and the have-nots. So it's like.
Understood. I would like to see that data at some point. We can schedule something. I'd like to see that, right? When we look at some of the surveys we got, specifically the community survey service, it was basically middle-aged white women, majoritly, who filled that out. So what does it look like when you know there's data gaps of representation in a survey? What does it look like for this focus group? Right? The missing voices.
I think it's important to note as well that the way that a focus group works and how they're selected is very different than how a survey is selected. So you won't see the same numbers that you do in a survey. It's not meant to be completely representative. That said, we did, as Dr. Bowers said, I'm speaking to this because it was I and my staff who were in charge of that communication. And we did push it out, as Oliver said, through social media, through our website, through our volunteer who has connections with all of the HOAs, as well as the business community. So we, we reached out to all of those, all of those databases, so to speak. And we also reached out to everyone who'd already worked with us. So the people who were in citizens academies and the people who partner with us on our independent investigation team investigations, and asked for their help to spread the word. So I think we did have a good amount of outreach. As Dr. Bauer said, we were purposely not trying to reach specific groups. And what I, what I found, and you will see this commissioner, or sorry, Councilmember Dahlhoff, when you do see the information, I was extremely pleasantly surprised by the diversity that we had with these three groups, from every, from age to race and ethnicity, to socioeconomic status, to educational attainment. Granted, they were small, because focus groups are small, but we really had a breadth of our community. And so that was, for me, as a, as an observer of those, it was, it was heartening.
That's awesome. Thank you, Laura. And I, as a follow-up, I'd like to see that breakdown of that data. So great start. I appreciate it.
Was that your only question, Councilmember Dahl?
For focus groups, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. I'm I'm trying to figure out exactly how to um. Ask this question. So um Chief Wick said, you know, we're a small city. We're considered a a a small city. Is that right, what you said, Chief? When you, when you started looking at all this, you you look at what our population is and then you go. Then do you build this based on that, right? Is that kind of building block?
Yeah, our our staffing model was built specifically on our needs. And then when I say our, that's the community.
Okay, so we're a, we're a city um with a population of over ninety percent, I believe. White people. And we also are a city where a good portion of our city uh people are. Um at the medium or above medium in income. And something that I've wanted uh all these years is to know. How much do the police deal with that other percentage? And and some, and I read it sometimes in in your reports. But I would think that staffing or how we, how you go about all this, which is. A big task that you've taken on, but you know, have done, I can tell I've done a lot of, a lot of work on this. How does that impact? How you, how, how many people you would need, what kind of crimes are we, you know, that kind of thing? Because I'm looking at a big six or seven million dollar deal here. And I'm realizing that, you know, I I live in privileged white America here. And so what? Do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
I think so, uh in a lot of ways, you know, when we talk about staffing model. Um we don't look at staffing model uh by race, we don't look at it by socioeconomics. Um we will look at it by the services needed uh and to provide that in depth. Uh Dr. Bowers, is that something you can do briefly? Uh the presentation when we provided the staffing model was over an hour long uh to public health and safety. So uh Dr. Bowers, is that something you can give a brief overview of? Just some of the factors that go into the staffing model.
Um so the staffing model is, as the chief said, the staffing model is very much based on how um. How the the city and the community expects their police to be. Um as well as, so it's about us meeting the community's needs. And also determining what the community's needs are so that we can help meet them. So we base it on a lot of um historical data, the types of things that happen, the types of engagements that officers have, how long they typically take. And we looked at many, many years worth of data to build that up. So that everything that we do was built specifically for this community. And in kind of growing along with the community, if that, if that helps.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yes, um. That helps. One, one of the things that would have helped to me, uh I think. Clarify some of this even over the years that I've been here is, you know, like a breakdown of. You know, how many women do you arrest and what's it for? And what about people of color? And uh you know, we get reports periodically and other things we do that we only have. Three percent or five percent of, of um, you know, black and Asian and, you know, all of that kind of thing. And I'm just wondering. White professionals like that live in Tumwater have some pretty good demands on, on their police department. And what they expect and what they want. And um. I'm, I guess I'm looking at a combination of equity and diversity kind of things. And just wondering how much our police department. Is involved, is involved in that proactively, uh you know, ahead of time, not just on the calls. And this may be a question that really it can't be answered, but it's something that goes through my mind. And especially as I see you cruising around doing things, and I've had nothing but a positive response. When I've had people leaping off the roof of my house or my apartment. Or somebody running through the neighborhood or that kind of thing. I, the the response is very good. But I've also lived in some mixed um situations here in Tumwater where people were afraid of the police. And um and so I'm just wondering how all these factors. Figure into us making this monumental um work that you're, that you're doing. Is it going to change anything or um is adding more people with? The main, you know, I don't know, just, just, I'm thinking out loud about just what, you know, what I've experienced, what I've seen. And poor people and and people with with needs that are. Fearful or else have been poorly treated, that kind of thing.
Go ahead, Commander Mason.
Um thanks, Chief. Um so Councilmember Kathy. I know where your heart is and I, I think I know where you're coming from. And uh one of the things that uh we've tried to be intentional about is looking forward to how we can. Continue to serve our community at what I would say is a high service level. Um one of the things about police work that is really important is relationships. And how we build relationships with our community uh and uh with, not just for calls for service. Because if someone calls for service, we will go, you know, we will go and we will uh provide the highest level of service that we possibly can. Um but one of the things that we have to be uh cognizant of is we have to build margin. So that we can have relationships with people, so we can have community um conversations. Because if we are running at um near zero margins. Uh then we don't have time to stop and have those uh proactive communications that we really all want to have. And what we've seen uh in our profession and specifically in the city of Tumwater. Over the past ten to fifteen years is our margins have gotten very tight. I'm not saying we don't have it, but we don't have it where we would like to have it. So one of the things that Doc Bowers has done when he built uh this uh service model is he built the service model. Taking into account calls for service and building a model that gives us uh capacity. For officers to have and build relationships and be proactive and go out into our community and not just be responding call to service, call to service, call to service. Like some police departments currently do. Um and some are doing their best, but they're even failing at that. You know, we've seen the headlines where people are waiting hours for a uh officer to respond for a pretty important call. Um you know, the, when someone calls nine one one, it is probably the worst day of their life. And they deserve to have uh a positive uh response and have some kind of resolution to that. And so that's where our service model, that's where this plan is going. And you know, it's expensive. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, but it allows us to have that capacity and that margin to build those relationships that we need to have. To do policing in Tumwater and do policing the Tumwater way.
I would add one other thing to that, Councilmember Kathy. You're always welcome to come here. You know, some of the statistical information uh you were asking for. We'd be more than happy to share that with you. We do share it with public health and safety, which you're no longer a member of. Uh because you have other duties you're doing. But if you, if you're interested in that, uh we, we would be more than happy to sit down with you and share that information.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be good for me to just come down and have a little tutorial and catch up on some of that. Uh I think I've complimented the police department several times back in the days. Remember when you used to deliver the packets?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, and I, I lived in a community of fourplexes and people close and whatever. And they were horrified at first when this police car would roll down the driveway and um come to my place. And you know, and some watched and saw it come on a regular basis and then they wondered, you know, what, what I was up to or whatever. But it gave me opportunity to talk to them about the police. So it's kind of goes with what Jay is saying that um, I guess I should call him by more official title there, but um. So I understand the, the getting out or being something other than chasing people down or going to, going on, you know. Calls that are difficult and so forth. So um. Anyway, thank you for the, for the discussion. And I know another thing you'd probably say is that what I'm trying to get at, there's, just like Jay said, there's room for, for work. There's room for.
There, there always is.
Yeah, yeah. So thanks. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Yep. Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commander Mason, because um you are playing in, right, with, you know, relationships is right. And you know, we had an event and over the weekend, well, we didn't, the community had an event over the weekend, um a walk for Aaron. Um where a couple council members were able to talk to a business owner who has not had the best experience in Tumwater. In fact, he's expressed, he's experienced hate and terrible things. And I think um looking at your plan with having an officer who's dedicated to businesses, like. This would be a great opportunity to like build those relationships. And if you hear of a business leader, even maybe before that position is hired for. Who is struggling in the community and just building that, that relationship with them. So they know that, you know, we're not going to tolerate that kind type of behavior. And that Tumwater PD is, is, is an asset and ally. So I really appreciate you um talking about the relationship portion of it.
So Councilmember Von Holtz, if I can add something to that, is that as soon as um we received uh the email that you sent. And um Councilmember Dahlhoff had sent about that business owner, we sent a sergeant out there yesterday to contact him. And we had a great conversation and we got some perspective and we built up that relationship. The, the reason the sergeant was sent out is because he already had a relationship with him. So he knew him, he said, hey, uh. I'd be happy to go out there and talk to him and have a discussion and he did. And that's how we try to build on these um opportunities. Uh and so we tried to let people know that, you know, in Tumwater, you know, to the be- best of our ability. Uh our police department will be there for you um and for our community members um whenever and whatever they need us. And we try to uh make a point of capitalizing on that. So I appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you.
Uh Councilmember Gaby.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Chief Wick, um on page thirty eight of the uh. Document in your packet that I'm looking at, hopefully it's your page thirty eight or so. Provides uh two thousand and nineteen uh data. So that was five years ago. And from what I read in that uh. In this uh document, it says that this document at the vendor from which this data was. Source, no, it's uh it hasn't bought. So my question number one is. I, do you have plans to? Do you have plans to have a, a different source or similar source? For the same data that you obtained in two thousand and nineteen on page thirty eight of this uh documentation? That is before we talked about data, I said.
I'm not sure I understood your question. Are you talking about the first, the Tumwater, the policing in Tumwater report? Because our strategic growth plan is in twenty eight pages.
So this is the uh part of the document that you gave to council. And let's see here, it is uh, it's referenced as a. So it is referenced as a list of figures. So figure five, six and seven, two thousand and nineteen uh crime, victim, uh victim virus. And that will be on, it says uh, I believe that is page seventeen, that's what that is referencing. But uh the actual PDF page is thirty eight.
I don't know which document you're referencing.
Well, this is documents that was given to, uh it says, uh Tumwater Police uh reported to the community. So my guess is uh, uh this is from a.
So Councilmember Gaby, can I um maybe help clarify?
Yes.
So the document you were referencing is our um, I believe it's under appendix A, policing in Tumwater. And it was a twen- um document that came out, I think in twenty twenty. Uh so we use twenty nineteen data. Are you asking to get updated data sets uh comparable to this?
Yes, because uh so the, so the reason why my question is not actually to get a com- uh a comparable data. Because you said in uh in this uh document that uh the company no longer has been bought over. So if that, if that company has been bought over, I don't know if, I guess the question would be. Would, are you in the process or would you get similar data in the future?
Okay, so if I can chime in on this one, um my understanding is that's the um RMS component from the previous page. Which is um saying the current vendor no longer supports it. Is that what you're looking at? Correct. So um as this stands, this is data that um we do not need that particular vendor in order to build. And the new vendor actually gives us a lot more capabilities for um data pulls, analysis and everything like that. So not only will we still be able to do this, but we'll actually be able to do it a lot better. I mean, from my position anyway, because the new system that we're getting in twenty uh, the new RMS system is a lot better. Um and does a lot more. So yeah, I, yeah, completely understand this bit. We're losing this particular piece of it, but we will still be able to do it and we'll be able to do it better.
Okay, so uh if you're able to get a better data, uh I do, I'm not sure how. Uh how, how many times a year you would do this presentation. Actually, next presentation, can you please uh by demographics, break down that data? Uh well, for whatever category you want to identify, say by race, by race, traffic infra- infractions, uh crime victim. Can you please just break down that data by demographic, please?
Are you asking that for tonight?
No, not, we're not tonight, going, moving, going forward.
So Doctor.
Going forward, going forward, if you were to do this, uh give this presentation, can you please? Break down that statistic by demographic.
And I think we can, uh we can talk to um Councilmember Gaby offline to find out exactly how he would like to see this. Since it is something for the future, I, we can definitely get, get you what you're looking for, I believe.
Thank you very much.
Uh Councilmember Dahlhoff and then Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to the data now. Um I know that we started with the, the. You know, Chief Wick was talking about the annual report to the community and, which I digged. I mean, I think that was huge. And so I did a little search on our website for all of our annual reports and I could not find it. So what am I missing of you showcasing what the reports that you've done and all the goals and everything? Because I just saw that one in the appendix, but I didn't see anything online.
I don't know that I can answer that because that was done through the city side um and submitted to the city. Um I don't know who, who's responsible for, for that.
I think I've been, moving forward, I think it'd be great when we talk about the proactiveness and the goals. And so much work goes on behind the scenes that when we get, you know, concerns, uh comments. If we could direct them to go, this is what they're doing. This is the long term plan. These are all the elements. It would help direct. Um to have all those reports because they have been evolving as our years have gone on. And so I just think it'd be beneficial for everyone and more transparent of all the work that you're doing.
We one hundred percent agree with you. We need the resources. And that's what we were talking about. I mean, the need to increase our social media presence.
Right.
You know, with a, with Dr. Bowers having his own page and able to put out more information that, you know, the, the information both you and the public have asked for. Uh we just have to have the resources and the ability.
Right. Thanks, Chief.
Uh Councilmember Jefferson, did you still have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you for the briefing and the update.
That community survey, I was on Public Health and Safety Committee at that time, stated that people of color did not feel safe in Tumwater. A majority of the people of color who answered that today. People of color still do not feel safe in Tumwater. How do we tackle that? I've been listening intently to the conversation. Since that time, racial harassment is increasing. We are getting threatening emails. We got one where the rainbow flag should not be flying over City Hall. We had a council member and I felt it was a threatening email when, when, when they were running. Um, who are these individuals? Are we taking this seriously? Because honestly, I don't feel safe in this community. I went to that march for Aaron and I was happy to see our community members to say, hate is not going to live in Tumwater. Love will live in Tumwater. That's how we're going to move forward as a community. But when we have dead chickens being thrown at this, this business owners, that's more than freedom of speech to me. That's racial intimidation. So is there a database? How can I look up what, 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 what hate crimes is going on? Because Tumwater is a microcosm of America. So we have our racial incidents going on. How can I find that? Um, my second point, I see that, uh, SROs to increase in elementary schools. We know that there's, I know that there's higher incarceration rates and arrest rates for marginalized kids in schools. When can I see that data of who is being arrested in schools? Specifically, I would like to see broken down by gender, race and age. Who are these individuals? And I would like to see the data for arrest rates in Tumwater. Who are these individuals? When can I get that down?
So to answer your second question, Councilmember Jefferson, uh, the same as Councilmember Kathy, you are more than welcome to come into the police department anytime. Uh, and we'll provide you that data. We provided that data to Public Health and Safety this morning, actually. Uh, and the arrests of the, I want to say, close to four hundred incidents our SROs were involved in the school year was point five percent. Um, arrest is the last thing our SROs, uh, want to do, uh, when it comes to children. Um, you know, unfortunately, like I said, it's point five percent. Uh, sometimes it does happen, but that is the rarity. Uh, most of the things are handled by the school, uh, and then through counseling and through their families. Um, and a few are sent to the prosecutor for review, but arrest is the last thing that, uh, it happens and it's the last resort, uh, when we do that, uh, in the schools.
Um, talk to me about hate crimes, racial harassment crimes. What is that looking like?
We don't have a lot, uh, of hate crimes reported to us. It doesn't, I'm not going to sit here and say it doesn't happen. Uh, but unfortunately, we don't have a lot reported to us. Um, even the incident you just mentioned, um, what you have been told and what we have been told is not consistent. Um, and, and I don't know where that disconnect is, but like Commander Mason said earlier, uh, as far as the police department and our culture, every opportunity is a chance to build a relationship. Uh, and that's, that isn't, it isn't a program, it's a philosophy. And that's how we engage our citizens. Um, and, and we use every opportunity to try to build those relationships. Um, I can't answer, um, why some people don't want to engage with us. Um, but we just keep trying and that's what we will always do.
That's a good thing. And Tumwater is now a military town. It used to just be DuPont and Lacey. Our military is here. So, um, hopefully our community is giving our military members some more love. Because there's a huge percentage of black and brown soldiers in the community now. So I'm advocating for that. And thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Dolhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the report and the timeline regarding technology, Chief Wicks, what would have to happen to move up body worn cameras to be aligned with the Flock system? Like forecasting, like what would you need to have to be able to move it up instead of twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-five for implementation?
I don't know how to answer your question because we've answered it several times in that the fact Flock and body worn cameras are not connected. They don't have any, they're two different platforms, two different requirements, two different money sources. They're, they're not, we're not even in the same ballgame.
Got it. I didn't mean that. Thank you for answering that way because I did not frame it right. What do you, what needs to happen to move body worn cameras in- implementation up sooner rather than three years down the road? Is it staffing primarily staffing?
Yes. And it's, and it's because of our, the RMS. I'm sorry, Strategic Management System.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, what our, our, our administrative.
That's the holdup.
Yeah. If we, if we didn't have this RMS, uh, build already underway and going, we could prioritize that right now. We just don't have the ability to do both.
So if you're able to hire more staff sooner, could the two go together or overlap?
I don't think so. Um, it would, if this will be hiring them while we're doing that, we will already be well into it. Um, and, you know, if you think about the presentation we did this morning with public records, uh, you're going to see that balloon when we bring in body worn cameras.
What would happen if canceled?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chief. Sorry, Chief. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, it isn't just the implementation. It's everything that comes behind the implementation. So when we talk about adding one admin staff, that helps with implementation, but we need all of our staff to handle the increased load that comes with the program as we implement it.
Right. So even if you phase in who is wearing the body worn cameras, the back work, the behind the scenes work is still the same regarding the staffing requirements, even if you phase in like just a few amount of patrols get it. So you're talking about the backend work, no matter how you do it.
Yes, you're, yeah, you're correct on that. And there's also more, you know, right now we are two years left in our in-car camera system. Uh, and we're locked into that. Uh, the last thing we want to do is have different platforms. Uh, and so how do we implement that timing? Uh, because most times you want to have the same in-car and body worn camera system. So you're running off the same systems, uh, so you don't have problems with records. Um, there, there's, there's several different, uh, things to add up to it.
I appreciate that clarification because I feel like this is the first time I've heard about the contract, the timeline of the dash cameras. So would we be losing money or would we default on that contract if we ended that and started body worn cameras? So there's a budgetary challenge there as well. That is the first I've heard of that. And now that makes more sense. So thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Well, I want to thank, uh, the staff, police department, and especially, uh, Dr. Bowers for spending a gazillion hours putting the data together. And also to Laura for, for doing a lot of work here. So I appreciate it. And this will definitely give us the outline and, and a plan moving forward that is, um, doable and gives us a lot of reasons why we are moving forward at, with how we're doing it and answers a lot of questions like with Councilmember Dolhoff. So.
Mayor Sullivan, is there one, can I add one thing?
Absolutely.
I, I just thought about it. Uh, one of the things you will see, um, and you guys will see this in the budget, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The first two years will come into the budget requests. Um, you guys have a heck of a challenge coming your way. Cause we're not the only one, uh, with a lot of needs. Um, and uh, so that's where you will see the first two years of the plan, uh, come into, uh, to the council.
Councilmember Dolhoff.
Thanks, Mayor. With that, when you're, when these are going to be phased in, these budget amendments and budget proposals, will it be explained of which portion will be, uh, delegated from the Prop One funds? Is that also part of the work is where those Prop One dollars are going and dividing like when we say public safety, what that means? And that will also be broken down of how to pay for everything?
That will be a decision, uh, with the mayor and the council. Um, right now, what we, the direction we've been given is to outline the needs. Um, and to give you an idea, I can't answer, you know, the pro- projected funding of the Prop One money over that five-year period is five point eight million. Um, but that's not just for us. And so, you know, and, and the council's going to have, have to look at all of that. And then, uh, with the mayor and the proposed budget and uh, decide how to, how, how you want to allocate it.
I mean, it would help me personally to have with your thirty-six years to have, you know, when we, you present your budget request of what you're needing, to just also hear from you of how you put all the puzzles together into pieces of everything you need. It would help me to just hear your opinion as we move forward about that because you've been doing this a lot longer. So, thanks, Chief.
All right. Any other questions? Great presentation. And this will, and so go ahead and review your book. Um, I have my binder in my office. So it's, uh, something I'm sure I'm going to refer back to multiple times. Uh, it's a lot of really good data.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank the, all those who spoke tonight from the police side of things with their, their patience and their, you know, kindness in answering our questions and also their knowledge and, uh, and experience. I want to thank all of you and we're, um, we're in good shape as a city with, uh, the leadership of our police department and, uh, not only their skills and experience, but as Jay Mason said, uh, their heart. So he was talking about mine, but I'm talking about theirs. Talking about his. So it all showed tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, so with that, uh, we will move to the mayor's city administrator report and I will start out with, uh, city administrator parks.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you, councilmembers, for your questions and, um, your good conversation. I would concur. I feel, um, a lot of pride, um, in the Tumwater Police Department. I think they're top-notch. I think they have wonderful hearts and, uh, really, um, uh, see that they, they live, um, they walk their talk. I'll put it that way. Um, just a couple of really quick things. Uh, first, a couple of fun things. Uh, there were about a thousand people who attended Dog Days this past Saturday at Pioneer Park. Um, lots of fun and activities. Um, the K nine demonstration by Tumwater PD is always, um, a big hit. And, um, it was a great send-off for, um, Officer Mize and K nine James, who, as you know, are recently retired. Um, they had a great opportunity to connect with the community at that event. I think they, um, everybody had a great time, uh, with them. Um, at the same time, the Parks Department was also hosting the Rally in the Valley, which is an adult volleyball tournament. And this year we actually sponsored forty-six teams, um, in that event. And that was actually up from twenty-eight last year. So um, lots of really, um, fun things happening in Pioneer Park over the weekend. Um, the only other thing is, um, again, a reminder, I apologize if I sound like a broken record. I wanted to just repeat some, um, information for you about the upcoming meetings. So no meeting next week because there are several councilmembers who are headed off to AWC, which is a great opportunity to do some networking and learn some new things and maybe hear what some of the other cities in Washington State are doing around their, um, police departments and, and, um, um, various other topics. I think that's a great opportunity for you all that are going. Um, June twenty-fifth is a work session. Uh, there are two things of note. First, um, because we're canceling the June eighteenth meeting, um, there will be two consent items. I, I recognize that you don't like to take action at a, at a work session, but these are consent items um, that are time sensitive, um, and they are coming to you from, um, one comes from the General Government Committee. That's the Community Center Design Contract. Um, and then the Linwood Avenue Sidewalk Authority to Solicit Bids, that's coming from the Public Works, um, Committee. So just wanted to give you another heads up that that's going to be on that work session. And then also that is the first joint work session with the Planning Commission. Uh, so for the first hour, uh, you'll be meeting with the Planning Commission and, um, it's related to the comp plan updates specifically related to the development code. So as a reminder, we're going to set everybody up, um, in a hybrid format. Um, so you, we, we encourage you to come in person to the council chambers. We'll have the big, um, tables set up in the middle of the room. Um, if you aren't able to make it, we will definitely have that hybrid option and, and make sure there's a Zoom link available. But once that first hour is done with the Planning Commission, they'll, they'll move over to the Sunset Room to continue their meeting. Um, and then you'll be able to, um, complete your work in that hybrid format for that evening. Um, and, and there isn't actually a lot on that, uh, uh, June twenty-fifth meeting after that. Um, so, um, we do have agenda items for July second meeting, uh, including a presentation by Courtney Fuller from Tumwater Hopes. I know that several, a couple of you at least have been asking for that. Um, so we're glad to, um, have Courtney come and talked with us. And then, uh, July ninth will be the next joint session, uh, work session with the Planning Commission again, using that hybrid format I described. That's going to be, uh, the topic for that night is the climate element. So that should be a really interesting topic. And then we have July sixteenth, regular meeting, July twenty-third work session, and then the council recess, which will be the first two weeks in August. And then we're back with a council meeting on August twentieth. So just wanted to give you all a heads up again and um, encourage you to ask any questions if you, uh, have them. That's all I have.
Oh, Councilmember Dolhoff.
Thanks, Mayor. I just, for the record, I'm going to be out of the country and not able to call in. So I'll be missing those meetings. I just wanted to know that, like, so if other people are taking leave as well, uh, quorum wise, I'm asking to be excused from those three meetings.
From the, just to clarify the point, the eight, the twenty-fifth, the second and the ninth?
That is correct. I will be in Australia.
Okay. Ooh, that sounds fun.
And so I'm not going to be calling in with that time difference.
Understood.
Figure out that time, right?
I was like eighteen hours ahead, so.
Okay. Thank you for that, Councilmember Dolhoff.
All right. Any other questions? And I do have you down, Councilmember Dolhoff, for those dates too. So, uh, and for me, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Von Holtz for doing, speaking this Saturday at the Olympia Air Show. Um, is one of those, um.
That's me. I thought of.
Oh, you're doing it?
Well, this is going to be awkward because I'm showing up. So.
So, sorry.
I mean, if Kelly wants to do it, Kelly can do it.
No, sorry. Okay, Councilmember Dolhoff will be doing the air show. Sorry. This is Lucas.
I mean, Kelly can totally do it.
Yeah, no, that's great. So, uh, Councilmember Dolhoff will be doing the speaking because this is one of those weekends where you have a na- again, um, multiple different things going on. And, and I had already committed to, we do sponsor the Juneteenth celebration at the rack in Lacey with the city of Lacey. So that's a huge event. And they wanted the mayor speaking at that particular event. So I can't be in two places at once. So I appreciate, um, you stepping up and, and helping with that. So this weekend has got a lot of very busy events. So, and great events. So, um, so anything else for the good of the order? So if not, I will adjourn the meeting at seven oh nine. And thank you, everyone. I appreciate it and enjoy the great weather we have outside. Thank you.